For the record, it shows that this is a special city council meeting held on Wednesday, November 23rd.
Yeah, it's November 30th.
November 30th, thank you. Wow.
Otherwise, we're gonna have Thanksgiving again.
Thanksgiving, yeah. Then I wouldn't have the closing on the House. November 30th, all members of council are present with the exception of Ryan Richard. Quorum is present. The press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence if you would like to join us for a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
You don't have an agenda, but if you did, the first item was made a second read out.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of a second reading of ordinance to amend 505 and 506. An ordinance to amend 505 and 506. City manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As was stated in our last regular meeting, council did give a favorable first read on this ordinance. This is just extending the timeline for the developer for the game owned development to close on the remaining properties, which they should accomplish Wednesday of next week. Should council elect to give a favorable second.
Thank you, Charlie. For the record, let it reflect that Ryan Richard has joined us, so we are now full council. Council entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance 505 regarding annexation of tax map number 644-0000-016, 027, 038, 039, and 042, and ordinance 506 regarding rezoning tax map numbers 644-0101-030, 031, and 344.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any discussion? There being an uncalled question, all in favor, sing or saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the second part of our agenda is the workshop part, which is where we are gonna have a conversation in regards to Tegukay Forever, which is hopefully going to be the funding arm of Catawba Park and how we can go about doing that. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to city manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna ask Joey Bleden and Anthony Ruffalo to join us here. Joey is our parks recreation director. Anthony works for, is a Tegukay resident, works for LPL Financial, has a financial planning background. And he and I and Joey have been working steadily on, basically trying to create a foundation.
You can't shut the door.
We can't.
David, you can't. It's an open meeting.
We can shut their door.
So, I'm, uh, council, I sent out some information to you guys on this. Thanks to Anthony's work, we have reformatted it to give it a little bit better flow for the sake of tonight's meeting. Everybody got one? Okay. I'll just, I'll just go through this very briefly and then we'll take, and then, yeah, at any point in time, if you've got questions, wanna jump in, or if you wanna wait till the end, yeah, and hear, hear the entire thing. But basically Catawba Park, meeting with the engineers, which we're working to have them here at your December meeting, it's gonna cost for the, the city-owned property approximately $1.5 million to take our 9.8 acres to finish. Okay? Now, that is based on us also finishing off the other 61, or the, the remaining acres, you know, on the Duke property and the Clear Springs property. So, because all the parking is basically on the Duke property, for first phase, we're gonna have to put parking where, you know, temporary parking, you know, gravel lot, that kinda thing on ours, on our property, until we can move into the, the Duke property and the Springs property. So, the 1.5 is a high figure. It's probably gonna be down in the million to million and a half range. Yeah, for that first phase where we can actually have two baseball fields and, yeah, lighted and kids participating. So, we've got a, right now, we've got $1.1 million and change in our Catawba Park fund. Okay? So, we feel like we're gonna be able to come very, very close, if not be able to completely fund Phase One. But then we've got the remaining acreage that we have to fund. So, how do we get there? You know, without, trying to get as close as we can without having to borrow money, you know, as much as we can. So, what we, yeah, nobody wants to just write a check to the city. They figure they do that when they pay their taxes once a year. So, it is deductible, but, you know, as I reached out, or Anthony actually reached out to me wanting to be involved with the city, and we started kicking ideas around, and he's actually done some work with foundations and things like that. It just kinda, you know, pieces kinda fell together. And, you know, we've had conversations with an attorney friend of his that has helped with foundations in the Charlotte area and things like that, who's given us a little bit of guidance, and that's kinda what brings us to tonight. So, wanna kinda catch council up to speed on what our thoughts are, get your feedback, and if council is okay with everything this evening, then we're gonna get, you know, we'd like to get this ball rolling, you know, so that we can get the foundation off the ground and start raising some money. So, purpose and mission, Tegukay Forever Foundation LLC recognizes that parks and open spaces are a major part of what makes Tegukay a special place to live, work, and play. It is the mission of the foundation to enhance the quality of life for citizens of all ages by promoting, providing for, and maintaining parks and open spaces, which strengthen and unite the community. In that effort, the foundation's purpose is to serve as the fundraising arm of the city of Tegukay for the endowment of capital projects and educational, recreational, and cultural community initiatives/events by requesting, receiving, holding, investing, administering, granting, and dispersing gifts of funds and property and making expenditures to, or for the benefit of the parks and open spaces owned by the city. So, that's the purpose and mission statement that, that we have come up with between the three of us for the foundation, should council like to move forward with it. So, what is the purpose? Initial purpose? Yes, sir.
If I'm understanding you correctly, this is not specifically for Catawba Park. The main focus is...
Microphone, microphone.
This is not specifically for Catawba Park. The main focus, right now, is for Catawba Park.
Correct.
So, if we, we go forward with this foundation forever, and we've raised our $12 million, that doesn't mean this goes away.
Correct.
That doesn't mean the funding that's available goes away.
Correct.
It can be used for other parks. Does it just have, does it just have to be used for parks?
Well, you've kinda skipped all the way through both pages there, so.
I'm sorry. I gotta hurry up here.
Yes. The initial, the initial purpose is to close the funding gap for Catawba Park and give residents, area businesses, a tax favorable way of, of being able to contribute and donate to that. Secondary purpose after the park is, you know, Mayor, as you just said, what we envisioned is to continue towards, you know, maintaining, improving the existing park, the other existing parks that we have, and, you know, any new future parks that, you know, I mean, the, the 20 acres in Windhaven perhaps, or any, any other place where we determine, you know, down, down the road that, hey, let's put a park here. You know, capital improvements at, at old parks and things like that. So, we, we had chosen to keep it specifically towards the, the parks and the open spaces, thinking that that would be the easiest thing for people to really get behind as, as a community, as area businesses and things like that. We've heard it for the past year, you know, you're cutting down all the trees, you're doing this, that, and the other thing. Well, you know, this foundation can not only help us offset the cost of, of building a new park, it could help offset some of the, the expenses that are currently in our general fund towards maintaining existing parks, could potentially keep us from having to borrow funds in the future for, you know, different large capital projects at future, at, at current parks, things of that nature.
I mean, I like the idea, I think, just as a comment at the outset, is we may need to better define, assuming we move forward, define what an open space is.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
You know, because an open space could that be a median, you know, on Tegukay Drive.
Correct.
You know, that sort of thing. And we wanna be sure, 'cause you don't want your people to make donations and this thing lives. We don't want people coming back and saying, hey, well, I donated specifically for parks.
Correct.
Now, you're fixing such and such, and that's not part of the deal.
Very, very good point. Yeah, and I think something like that could be tweaked as easy as, instead of using the term open space, using green space, since we do have that clearly defined in our code, in our city code.
Something like that, whatever.
Is green space greenway. So, yeah.
Just to be sure.
Yeah.
And yet, you don't want, and you don't wanna pigeonhole yourself too much.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
So, it's a little tricky.
One of, one of the ways to ensure that funds are used for a particular project is when you write a grant. So, when, once, once the entity is set up as a, it's, there is multiple, multiple types of 501(c)(3)'s that you can set up. This will be set up as a supporting organization for the city. So, its primary mechanism is to support the city. Now, when people donate, they can specifically earmark their donations to go to specific projects.
That's true, yeah.
So, then if I'm understanding you correctly, if I want something to go towards the median on Tegukay Drive, I write my check for the median on Tegukay Drive. That's all it can be spent on?
Yes.
Okay?
If that is, only if that is one of the things that is defined within the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws as an approved, this is what we're gonna do.
We're, Dottie writes her check just, here's my check. She writes a check, she doesn't have it, you know, earmarked for anything.
Right.
Okay? Then we go and we put a, a request to the foundation. The city, city would have to request the money from the foundation, correct? So, the city goes and puts a request in the foundation for, I don't know, $50.
For events in Memorial Gardens.
Right, okay. Dottie's money can get pulled in, as she said, the Memorial Gardens, Dottie, Dottie's money can get pulled in, but mine can't.
Unless it's specifically earmarked.
So, mine specifically earmarked for the median, and we're just using the median as an example. And Dottie's is specifically not mentioned for anything.
Right. And that's more, you, you think of that more of like the large corporate donors. Let's say you get a Wells Fargo, and they say, hey, we'll give you $15,000, but we want, we wanna pay for an actual Little League field. We don't wanna buy pens and pencils for your organization. So, that's, you're probably not going to run into citizens saying, I want my $100 to go to, you know, although you can.
You may.
I'm sorry, how long have you lived here?
The, yeah, the, the Rock Hill Foundation, the Rock Hill Parks Foundation, you know, they, they have specific things that they're asking people to donate towards, but somebody may have a favorite park in their neighborhood, and they said, nope, I want it just for the maintenance of that park. Okay, then that's what it's earmarked for, and that's all it can be spent for. But they, they try to, they, if you go on their website, it, it's, it's to find, you know, Glen Karen, Manchester, Cherry Park, things like that, that's where they want the monies to go, and people to donate the monies towards. But they're not refusing money either. People can, can earmark it for other things, so long as it fits within the bylaws.
I mean, is there a sense that at some point, that this amount, the money, if donations were continued to funnel in, we would be using this money before we use city money, you know, tax revenue money and our budget or whatever?
Potentially, yes. Joey and I, what, probably four or five years ago, sat in on a thing with the National Recreation Park Association, the Ogilvy Foundation in West Virginia, Wheeling, West Virginia. That foundation funds 100% of the O and M and A of all parks recreation for the entire county. There's no tax dollars having to go into it anymore. Now, it didn't start off like that, but they've had some very generous donors, you know,
Sure.
Family gifts, you know, when, you know, folks pass away, things like that. Yeah, I'd love to see this get to that point.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, that it will, but I, I don't wanna handicap ourselves either. But, yeah, it potentially could get to the point where if this is successful enough, it, it most certainly could help defray a good, you know, fund, public funds coming from tax dollars that's in the general fund.
How about, go ahead.
So, if we do this, theoretically, we could do what the, the school district does with the middle school sports, which is the Dancing With The Stars thing, where they, they have a dance, you know, and they, they have a fundraiser for middle school sports. We could theoretically do something like this. We could do a casino night, and all of the proceeds from that casino night would be towards the park. And instead of selling cookies on the corner, you know, at a 50 cents apiece, we could, we could increase the size of this foundation by bigger leaves, 'cause I think the, the Dancing With The Stars thing raises $60,000 to $70,000 every time they do it.
The fundraising capabilities or the fundraising opportunities are just limited by your own creativity. It's whatever you want it to be.
You shook your, you winced at the casino night.
Well, no, I, I think the state law in South Carolina changed recently, and you're allowed to do so.
Well, the, the other thing is, like those type fundraisers, things like that, with having the foundation, if the foundation is the one putting it on and not the city, it also gives us, as a city, a buffer in that it limits your exposure. Okay? If you have a, yeah, if we get to the point where a foundation is able to do those type things, put on those events, yeah, it may come the past, you know, years from now that maybe our city events, you know, the, the concerts and Fourth of July and things like that, maybe that's being funded through the foundation and being run through the foundation, like Rock Hill's Come See Me every spring. It's not run by the city. It's got its own organization. The city supports it, you know, gives it space to, to happen, you know, add staff members to, to help run it, but it's got its own committee, its own organization, it's its own entity, so.
But we're not talking about that right now.
We're not talking about that yet.
I know, but we're all jumping way ahead of ourselves, right?
If I can, if I can dive back into the, into the document, so.
At least we're thinking.
Let's, I tell you what, let's flip to the back page, city council's role.
Interesting.
Okay? The way we envision this would be that council would appoint the majority of the, of the non-person board of directors. Those positions would include, you know, chairman, vice chairman, secretary treasurer, having the PRT commission vote on a liaison to sit on this board. And then between, you know, I guess Joey and I appoint, we, we would come up with two at-large people or members to, to join, and then two members of staff. Now, the, initially, the two members of staff are me and Joey. Five years, 10 years down the road, and the reason we worded it like this is so that it would give us flexibility down, you know, in the future. It, maybe it's, you know, one of Joey's staff members and, you know, Katie as the assistant city manager. But I think, most certainly initially, I would see it as, as Joey and I as a staff member, as the staff members on there. And then two council liaisons that would be members, but they would be non, non-voting members. From there, you know, what we thought was, you know, they, they could serve as many different terms, you know, as, as council appointed them to, but the officers rotate every two years. That way, you don't have the same chairperson for 20 years, you know, and things like that. City council would, would, would have the right to remove a board member for calls at any point in time. Yeah. I won't get into all the ugly things that somebody might do, but council would have that, that opportunity to remove them at any point in time. The, the, the board would draft the bylaws, have independent council review them, and then bring it to council for, for final ratification. So, council's still gonna have a lot of say-so with the board without having to get bogged down into the day-to-day minutia of, of operating the foundation. They're gonna have to bring you the annual budget, you know, that they prepare and approve as a board. They bring it to council for, for final approval. Y'all are appointing the majority of the board of directors, so that way, you know, we're, we're making sure that the people that are running the foundation or that are on the board of directors of the foundation are keeping in tune with the vision of the city and council, you know, and it wouldn't be just a paper application, hey, I wanna be on it, okay, well, that looks good. Putting them through an interview process, yeah, like they were doing a job interview, like you would for any board of directors type position. So, that's kinda what we were, that's kinda what we were thinking. Yeah, it, it will be a little bit time-consuming process to get it put together. I mean, if you flip back to the, to the other side, yeah, we've gotta, we've gotta file the forms with the IRS to set it up as a supporting organization. We gotta submit the Articles of Incorporation. Anthony and I and attorney friend of his had a great conversation the other day. He can write them for us and then let, he's not a South Carolina attorney, so we'd have to give it over to Bob McCleve, let him review. He would assist us with filing with the Secretary of State. And then we gotta go through the 501(c)(3), you know, get all those forms. Jennifer, I know you've done that. Hope McBride was a huge help with the police department with Camp Cadet. So, yeah, we can get through that process. I feel, I feel pretty good. Yeah, and then we start with the drafting of the bylaws, you know, and getting that to council. Now, once the forms have been filed with the 501(c)(3), and I thought this was interesting that I heard from, from Christian yesterday.
Christian, the lawyer?
Christian is the attorney. Yes, ma'am. Was it, you know, once, once we file for it, we can absolutely go ahead and start fundraising. Yeah, and, and may not get as big a funds, you know, 'cause it's with the promise, hey, we filed for it, we're pretty certain we're gonna get it, and then we can give you the information once we have it, instead of sitting around and waiting for, you know, three, four months to get it. But I think Camp Cadet got theirs in about two months, so.
It could be a very quick process.
Right.
I mean, certainly, the, doing things with the Secretary of State is almost instantaneous.
Correct.
You know, you're, you're corporation as soon as you file.
Correct.
It's the IRS that'll be a little bit slower.
Yes, ma'am. So, that's, you know, I'm not saying that any or all of this is set in stone. Again, this is the, the conversations that, that we have had. Yeah, wanted to get, again, get together with you folks to get input from you. Yeah, if there's anything that sticks in your craw, so to speak, on any of this, questions you may have, and see if you think it's a good idea, so we can possibly get moving forward on it.
What do you think?
I think it sounds like a great idea.
Okay. Anything you see in there changing, or you wanna go over the document before you make that decision?
Yeah, I'll review a little more, talk to Charlie offline some, get his thoughts, kinda provide some additional feedback. But, I mean, it seems like these guys have done their homework and kinda went in the right direction.
Didn't you say Rock Hill has something similar to this?
Rock, um, yeah, Rock Hill's got the Rock Hill Parks Foundation. Now, with it, it is actually a subsidiary, I guess is the appropriate term, of the larger York County Foundation, which is part of the Carolinas Foundation. So, it's three tiers down, and they just kinda jumped in under their umbrella. And I was going through it all online this week. It, it's, you can get lost at it. Yeah, we could potentially petition them to do something like that, but, yeah, I think we can put the, we've got the, I think we've got good enough people here in town. Anthony's been a huge help with some guidance early on here thus far. I think we can do this. I don't think we need to be part of the Carolinas Foundation, Carolina Forever, or just Carolinas Foundation or something like that, but, yeah. The parks and, and, and green space, open space, whatever, I mean, we wanted to kinda keep it broad and not just pigeonhole it just to Catawba Park, so that, I mean, eventually, that project's gonna be done. And I'd like, I think this can be beneficial enough to where, I'd like to see it keep going, you know, long after I'm dead and gone, so.
David, what do you think?
Well, are you considering just a local Tegukay residence for this nine-member board? Are you looking more professional, bringing some professionals out of town people?
Personally, I think both. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I think, obviously, if we've got somebody that's qualified and talented that's a Tegukay resident, most certainly. But I wouldn't want us to pigeonhole ourselves, you know. Joey has, has met tons of people through, just through the programming side of things that, they don't live here, but, God, they can't wait, you know, they, they love our parks, they, they love, you know, participating in our programs, and they're very skilled and talented people. You know, so I, I wouldn't want it to be pigeonholed to that, but, yeah, as far as...
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest, let's don't just make it just our local retired population or something.
Okay.
I, I mean, I think that we have to, you know, going forward, you, we have to really identify job descriptions so that it's very clear what skillset we are looking for.
Correct.
Because you are otherwise going to get, you know, the people around the, you know, us and people like us in the city, or not in the city, who just have an interest in green space or think this is a good idea or wanna serve on a board, but they don't have the skillset.
Right.
And so, to me, that's critically important. The other thing that's critically important is what the bylaws say.
Yes.
Since that's going to dictate voting and, and how voting occurs.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, I suppose, if any of the decisions by this foundation, because this is still the city of Tegukay, you know, who, is there approval process beyond that? And is that the council, is that the city manager, or is it not? Because I recognize this is a separate institution, and we do have to be careful, again, as you say, you know, limit liability, we're not in it, but at the same time, it's the city, so, you know, I'm not just exactly sure how that would work, so that would be something to be thought through.
Anthony maybe will speak to a little bit better than I on, but as a supporting organization, they, they are gonna be somewhat limited. I mean, you're gonna approve their budget, but you're not going to have to approve every single time they write a check.
But would we have to, would we be approving their budget? Does their budget come out of this foundation money, or does it come out of city money? 'Cause if it doesn't, if it's the foundation money, then do we approve the budget? And I'm not saying we have to answer these questions now.
Correct.
These are just a couple of things that are coming to my, to my head immediately.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know you've had a lot of experience in this, Anthony, so you might...
Well, the answer is both.
Sure.
It just, it, it depends.
It depends.
It depends on when you sit down and you, and you really dial it in with, with drafting the by, the specifics of the bylaws and, and what you want them to say, which is why, you know, everybody wanted council's input. And they ultimately have the, the power of appointment, which gives the city a substantial amount of power as to who's gonna be on that board and who's gonna carry out that mission, but you don't get bogged down with day-to-day decisions in the minutia.
But there's some accountability or reporting or something, and those are the things that, you know, I'm sure will be worked through. On its face, I think it's a great idea.
I think the worst thing that's gonna happen is that they don't raise money.
Yeah. I mean, and it, and it goes away, and it goes away.
That's the worst thing that's gonna happen. But I think, I think, I mean, it's a, it's a fantastic, it's just a different way to approach citizens about being involved in the community, and, I mean, who doesn't love Little League, Little League ballfields and softball fields, and everybody wants to, everybody wants to see that grow within the city, you know, for their, for their children. And that's, I mean, my motivation is I moved here in, in March, and, you know, I'm planting my roots here, and I'm gonna raise a family here, and, you know, it's, I just wanted to be involved with the, the process.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
Jen?
Well, who would be responsible with the filings with the IRS? Would this be a city staff person versus the treasurer on this?
Well, I think at first, until this, until, you know, you get going, I think we use the, the city resources until we're fully staffed. And then part of, one of the, one of the, you know, one of the members that you look for is CPA.
Sure.
To put on staff that will do the, the accounting and handle the books.
Right.
Okay.
That's, you know, that's how a lot of the organizations work.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because it shouldn't be, I mean, it's not, it's not a, a lot of, lot of work.
Job descrip-
Well, we're gonna get so much money.
I know. I'm thinking a lot of money.
Job descriptions, can you help us write those job descriptions, you know, for the chairman, the vice chairman, the secretary of the treasurer? You know, you're saying there's gotta be a CPA on the staff, which I assume would be, is that something that you can help us with?
Sure. We put a man on the moon.
There you go. You personally?
You were involved, I didn't, I didn't realize.
I said, we collectively.
You look so much younger.
His little name is Apollo.
Yeah. There you go.
I'm sorry, Jen, I jumped in on you there.
No, that's okay. I, I like the two-year staggered terms with the initial one-year term for certain persons, so that we can keep that. No limit to the number of consecutive terms, not too crazy about, only because some people in the community do feel a lot of reservations even putting their hat in when there's a committee opening, because they just feel like the person there already has a shoe in. They're not gonna even get a chance, because they feel like council already says, oh, I like them, I'm used to them, I know what the heck I'm dealing with. So, I'm not, I'm not saying, I don't know what the magic number is, but I'm not sure that that could be something we might wanna consider having some sort. And it, there's other boards I've been on that we don't like that idea, 'cause, you know, you get a camaraderie, you know, and we fill the voids, like we've got a CPA, you know, we've got a lawyer, we've got a doctor, depending on what the board would, may need. But some of the ones I'm on, you actually have to step down after three consecutive terms, and you have to be off per se for one year, and then you can go put your hat back in there, you know, to, to come back on just as an alternative, if we were to...
We had that, one of the boards that I was on, we had that, you could, I can't remember if it was three or four, but you had to sit out for a year.
Yeah.
And you, you, and that was it.
Yeah.
So. Certainly incorporate that.
So, it's just an idea to throw out there, 'cause some people are just so worried, why, there's no way, why even put my name in, because the guy's been in there forever.
Well, and I think, most certainly, is, is, once we get to the point where we're actually formulating the bylaws, you know, we'll be sharing those drafts with council, getting input along the way before they ever really become ratified. So, things like that, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, if, if that's the direction council wants to go, yeah, I, I put it on as, as unlimited. Yeah, my line of thinking was, if you got a great group and they wanna keep doing it, why would you wanna kick 'em off just 'cause they've been there for eight years? You know, I mean, but at the end of the day, absolutely understand what you're saying. So, I mean, we, we can craft that, yeah, and follow that direction from council, however y'all wanna go with it.
Where do we go from here?
If council's on board, we can, we can start working on setting up, getting the IRS forms filed as the supporting organization, getting the, working on the Articles of Incorporation, getting that stuff in the, in the 501(c)(3) documents, getting that stuff rolling while probably on a parallel track. You know, working with Anthony on job descriptions for... Anthony on um job descriptions for board of directors um things like that and start trying to get those people
It's going to take a few months to really um you know to to file all the paperwork and draft all the necessary forms and in the interim over the next two three four months however long that takes then maybe work on appointing board members and then once you have the board appointed then you work on the the bylaws and then once the bylaws are done then you can kind of finalize everything
All for one
While you're while you're waiting for the 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 five oh one C three approval
Okay um is it possible at our next our December council meeting this gets presented as you know a Cliff Notes version
Sure
About what we what we want to do and then we get a vote from council to authorize you to move forward
Absolutely
Hopefully we'll get more than our faithful council uh our ca council attendee to attend the meeting so that they can understand
I won't
So they can have an idea of what's going on um so can we get that on the agenda for for December and then
December and then yes sir
You know we can get a vote of council to move forward does anybody object to that?
No
I'm glad to I'll I'll have Sylvia put it on the December agenda tomorrow morning
Perfect um any other questions demonstrations of manifestation
Real quick you did mention Bob McCleve as far as for helping out after your buddy drew everything up are we going to run into any type of conflict of interest there being keeping it a separate entity or could Bob the you know build the T G K forever foundation for when they do have money coming in to give it to him later is the city going to be responsible for those hours he works?
My my personal opinion is we would use Bob on the initial end of of getting the setup and whatnot but then would move towards uh having an independent council that the foundation foundation would actually hire pay you know that kind of thing for ongoing but using our our current city uh attorney to to assist with the filings especially really with reviewing the the and getting the articles of incorporation reviewing the bylaws things of that nature and and assisting with those type things um yeah the good thing is is Bob does have a a strong IRS ba um financial background um based on his his undergrad and early work before he became an attorney
Have you talked to him about this?
Uh I have um but I've told him to hang tight um but it's yeah maybe coming uh here pretty soon and he said let me know uh when you're ready to to start doing something with it um obviously we'll keep it to a minimal as much as we can
Yeah I mean I think that there may be a conflict um according to bar rules
Okay
Um but I would we could certainly as his client waive the conflict
The conflict yes ma'am
Um for this purpose if we want and you know let's see if he's comfortable with it I agree
Correct
His time won't be taken very much but if there's ever a challenge to the bylaws or to something then are we thrown in the middle of it you know by virtue of the fact that he's our lawyer
Yeah and like I said I haven't I haven't gotten too in depth with him uh because I wanted to get with you guys first um and then um then then circle back around with him but yeah we can I'll absolutely have those conversations with him
Okay
Anything else?
I think it's a great idea So when people keep asking for more benches with the living more gardens can I now refer them to you?
As soon as we get the foundation set up yes ma'am
And we have to get a little money first
Catawba Park will absolutely need some benches all over the place yes ma'am
Wow that's exciting
Thank you
Motion to adjourn
Oh heck yeah
Do I have a second?
Yes
We're adjourned